It is five o'clock and I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Here.
Councilmember McEckern.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. This is the time when the public is allowed to address the council. I don't see anyone presently to that's here to address the council, therefore, I call for declaration of closed session items by City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have six items on the agenda this evening. Two are existing litigation. They are items A and B. A for the Airport Authority, B for the City Council. It is the same litigation, SEC versus City of Victorville pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D1, and the case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Item C is for the City Council, Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code 5495-7B, position as the City Manager. Items number D, E on behalf of the Rail Authority, and F on behalf of the Victorville Redevelopment Agency are all related. They are real estate negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.8. These are properties located in the Northern Triangle area. The real estate negotiations are between the city, the Rail Authority, the RDA, TRED, Inland Energy, and DXC. With that, to the extent there is any reportable action, we will report it at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess through our closed session, and we will convene at 6:00 PM. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember McEckern.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. May we have our closed session announcements by our City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had six closed session items. Items A and B are related. They are existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D1. This is the SEC versus City of Victorville litigation. Item A on behalf of the Airport Authority. Item B on behalf of the City Council. Item C was Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code 5495-7B. The position title was City Manager. Items D, E, and F are all related. One on behalf of the city, one on behalf of the Rail Authority, and one on behalf of the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency. Real estate negotiations pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.8 concerning significant portions of property up in the Northern Triangle area of the city. And the negotiating parties are the city, the Rail Authority, RDA, and TRED, and that would be the City Manager on behalf of those entities, and TRED, Inland Energy, and Desert Express. There is no reportable action with respect to any of those items.
Thank you. Let's see here. Now we have, we will have our invocation, and it will be delivered by Pastor Dane Davis, First Christian Church of Victorville. And then after that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our Police Chief Sam Lucia. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. It's a blessing to see our national motto, "In God We Trust", up there. One of my favorite prayers in the Old Testament is in Daniel 9 where Daniel prays. He says, "God, we do not make requests of you because we are righteous, but because of your mercy. Oh Lord, listen, forgive. Oh Lord, hear and act for your sake. Oh my God, do not delay, because your city and your people bear your name." Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much that these city leaders proudly proclaim our national motto, "In God We Trust." And Father, we trust in them to make wise and discerning decisions tonight, to advance our city in a direction that would be honoring to you and advantageous to the citizens of this city. Lord, we thank you for Victorville, California. Lord, we thank you for bringing us through some tumultuous times in recent years. We thank you for the wonderful weather we enjoy. Lord, we thank you for the climate. We thank you for the business climate. And Lord, we thank you for the housing developments that have given us wonderful places to live. Lord, we just pray for Mayor Garcia and each of these council members tonight. We pray for unity, and once again, wisdom and discernment in their decisions, and help us, Lord, to follow their lead as they lead this city well. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Now we have a presentation. This presentation to council for the city's involvement at the Victor Valley Bike Tour by Thurston Smith, previous mayor of the City of Hesperia.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to give you an update on the first annual Victor Valley Bicycle Tour. Turned out to be a great success, a lot of work, as your City Manager can attest to. But I want to thank a few of our sponsors that really made this happen for us. Desert Valley Medical Group, Desert Valley Hospital was our presenting sponsor. Our breakaway was Advanced Disposal and Bertech, our regional disposal companies. Jersey Mikes, Eldorado Broadcasting, and Mojave Copy. Hopefully all of you do business with Sam over there. He did a fabulous job for us. Our Grupetto sponsors, High Desert Community Foundation, Signify Design, Matic Corporation, the Town of Apple Valley, City of Hesperia, in alphabetical order, politically correct, the City of Victorville. The Lewis Group of Companies, AMR, our ambulance service, Apple Valley Communications, Mojave Water Agency, ICR Staffing Services, Edible Arrangements, Sheer Realty, SEMI Promotions, Kona Ice, Passantino Anderson, Donate Life, Apple Valley Rancho's, Pure Right Drinking Water, Napa Auto Parts, Hesperia Recreation and Park District, Victorville Cycles, Desert First Aid, Invitilate Sport Nutrition Drink, The Wellness Champions, Dr. Pepper Snapple Group, Splattered Inc., and ESI Grips. They're a company in Hesperia that do grips for bicycles. They're world renowned, and they're right here in the high desert. Summit Leadership Academy supplied us with about 50 of our youth for volunteers. The Victor Valley College Foundation, Public Safety Center, Courtyard by Marriott, Matic Corporation, VVTA, Sandbag, Skag, MDAQMA, which we all know, that's Mojave Air Quality Management District. But to let you know, we had over 200 riders that participated in the first annual ride. Our youngest rider, young man by the name of Owen, was 11 years old. So we can all do 10 miles if Owens can. Our young lady, the youngest, did the 25-miler with her father. She was 12 years old. Our most, more seasoned rider was 75 years old from Apple Valley. And we had a young man, 76 years old, that came all the way from Ventura to ride. The riders were far away from Texas. Doug would know his name. The manager of Dr. Pepper Snapple heard about our ride and had his bicycle and his girlfriend or wife come out from Texas and participate in that. That was very good. We had rider from Oregon, San Diego, the young man from Ventura, and we got a lot of help from the Victor Valley Velos Bicycle Club. Our very own Assemblyman Jay Obernolte rode the 100-mile ride. Our Hesperia mayor, Eric Schmidt, made the 10-miler. From VVWR, manager Logan Olds. Next year's date, mark your calendars, because I'll be coming back to make sure we have some participants from the council. I'm going to try to create a challenge, another one. But October 29th of 2016. Right now, we should have around $10,000 to give back to our community and the youth in bicycle rodeos. I was just talking with Sam earlier. So we're going to go to each city in the town, work with the school district, so we can have a big audience in their elementary schools to give back to the youth. Our committee was myself as the chair. I don't know why I keep getting elected to the chair. I get things done. Barb Stanton, Mayor Protem, from the Town of Apple Valley. City Engineer from Hesperia, John Levelle. Our very own Doug Robertson, from your City Manager. Dan Sosa and Cynthia from the City of Hesperia. And Todd Matthews, which is a fellow rider, and he is, works in the football program or teacher at Hesperia High School. I have a little video that's about 2 minutes 40 seconds long. I think we're going to key up. But if you'd like to go on to YouTube videos, Stringer Media, which is out of the high desert, has about a 17-minute video that'll give you more opportunities to look at the great success of the Victor Valley Bicycle Tour. Thank you, and we'll enjoy the video.
I was involved in the former Tour de Apple Valley, which was struggling a bit. And as that, I was a board member there, and as that disbanded, I felt we need a regional tour, something to bring all of us together. And so I reached out to our current board members, one of, pardon me, Hesperia's former mayor, Thurston Smith. Smithy's like a firestorm. He's so wonderful. Victorville City Manager Doug Robertson, Dan Sosa, John Levelle. Brought together what I thought was a very dynamic board, and this is the result of that. Very, very proud of all of them who worked so hard to bring this regional bicycle tour that I think in years to come will be amazing for our high desert.
This is my first ride ever. I've always been a runner, so I kind of converted over to cycling after a couple injuries with running. So I'm just here for support. My boyfriend's doing the 100-mile. I'm doing the 50. He kind of talked me into this, so I'm excited.
Bicycle Club, go at it. Woo-hoo. Thank you to all of my volunteer girls here registration. You're the bomb.
Just support my community when all the events they having around to town, and I would like to participate in, and donate my time and also my money, you know, to whatever they got to do with the fundraising. And I like to enjoy that.
Yes. We anticipate each year, and it growing each year, having more cyclists in town, hotel accommodations, et cetera, all the things you would expect. But this first year, we had donations from many agencies that helped with our goodie bag. And, you know, it's always great when you enter something and you get something back. So we're just so pleased at the outcome and the participation. Apple Valley's closed some of their roads. Hesperia's got road closures. And the rides, there's 100, a 50, 25, and a 10-mile family fun ride. So I do just cover all the bases for the real hardcore enthusiasts who just, the weekenders who just want to have a great time.
It's killing me. But, you know, I'm not in the greatest shape, but I'm trying to, trying to do my part to make, to make this happier and healthier Hesperia. I'm back on the road.
Spreading the word and the healthy lifestyle that we're all trying to embrace and do a little better. And that includes me.
Thank you, and I hope everything coming good. And thank you for everything. And guys keep and do that more often. We needed this kind of events.
I was involved in the...
On the tandem bicycle, the wife was pedaling in front. Her husband in the back was legally blind, and they participated. It was a great activity. Doug, thanks for all your help in this. Look forward to next year. I'll come before you again when we nail down the dates for the bicycle rodeos with our youth. Have a very Merry Christmas. Thank you very much. Good to see all of you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, now, can we have our City Clerk present the agenda to council, and any revisions to the agenda?
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the City Clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the City Council. And there is one revision that has been submitted for tonight's agenda. It has been provided to the council as well as the public. It is concerning item number B1, and this is a response received from a property owner in favor of the council action to approve the proposed development agreement amendment. And that's the only revision I have, Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. We do not have any appeal hearings at this time, so we move on to item B, public hearings. I don't have any cards from anyone.
No cards received.
Item B1, request to amend development agreement as set forth in ordinance number 2350. And I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards or anyone that wants to address the council, so I close the public hearing. Do we have any comments from council members?
I'll go ahead and move for adoption and wait for the reading?
Yes, I need to read the title of the ordinance. Ordinance number 2350, PLN 15-00037, a request to amend a development agreement by and between the City of Victorville and Adelanto Greenworks 1 LLC in connection with a phased 60-acre 10-megawatt solar power generation facility on single-family residential district land north of Palmdale Road, east of the logical extension of Mesa Linda Avenue, south of the logical extension of Seneca Road, and west of the logical extension of Topaz Road. Adelanto Greenworks 1 LLC, care of Garrett Bean.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Cox, to wait for the reading and introduce the ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move to item B2, notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the Delray Sewer Project. I open the public hearing at this time. Again, I don't have any cards, therefore I close the public hearing. Comments by council members?
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item B3, notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the drainage improvements for Air Expressway at Turner Wash Project. Again, I don't have any cards, and I open the public hearing. I don't have anyone addressing the council at this time. I close the public hearing.
For approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Now we have item C, consent counter, and we can actually approve via consent counter from item C1 through C5 unless there is an item that needs to be removed for discussion.
Move approval of the consent counter.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Written communications, item D1. We have the appointment of Mike Rothschild and Vince L. Anken. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes.
To Legislative Review Committee.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D2, purchase of a 2016 Jeep Wrangler Sport 4x4, right-hand drive vehicle. Madam Clerk, will you read the recommendation, please?
The recommendation is that the City Council and the Victorville Water District Board of Directors award HW Hunter, Inc. the purchase of a 2016 Jeep Wrangler Sport 4x4, right-hand drive vehicle, as budgeted for in the fiscal year 2015-2016 Capital Improvement Project budget.
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D3, authorization and acceptance of the transfer of governmental use properties from Successor Agency to the City of Victorville pursuant to the approved long-range property management plan as set forth in resolution number R-S-A-15-004 and 15-074. Madam Clerk, will you please read the recommendation?
The recommendation is that the Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and the City Council of the City of Victorville adopt resolution numbers R-S-A-15-004 and 15-074 approving the transfer and acceptance of properties for governmental use.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D4, partial release of property agreement relating to the Desert Plaza's project owner participation agreement as set forth in resolution number R-S-A-15-005. Madam Clerk, can you read the recommendation, please?
Recommendation is that the City Council of the City of Victorville, sitting as the governing body of the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, adopt resolution number R-S-A-15-005 approving the partial release of property agreement relating to the Desert Plaza's project owner participation agreement.
Move.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
D5, standard sublease agreement with Air Methods Corporation for Building 724. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation, please.
Recommendation is that the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve entering into a standard sublease agreement between Air Methods Corporation and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority for Building 724.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D6, this is the January 5th, 2016 City Council meeting. We need to make a decision here, or do we need a recommendation?
I believe Mr. Robertson's going to address that item.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We originally considered advising the council. It would be good to cancel this meeting simply because the first day back from the Christmas holidays for employees would be the day before this meeting. Not enough time to put an agenda together. But as you know, we've been struggling a little bit to schedule our next strategic planning session, a refresh of what we did two years ago. So I asked the City Clerk to contact each of you to find out your availability because that's something that we don't need an agenda for. So my recommendation would be to, rather than cancel this meeting, which is what we originally thought might happen, is that we actually move this meeting up. And Carol, if you could fill me in on the, what the time, start time that was discussed for that strategic planning session.
You had suggested that we...
You had suggested that we either start at 2:00 in the afternoon and maybe run till 6:00, or you could start later, 3:00, 3:30, and take a break for dinner and...
Our first session took about six hours total to do. I think we should at least try to budget that much time on that day, if we can dedicate that much. But out of the discretion of the council, I don't know scheduling-wise if it's easier for you to come in a little bit earlier and perhaps stay a little bit, not stay as long, or come in a little bit later and potentially stay later into the evening.
Question, Madam Mayor. This is going to be long involved, and it requires the attention of the council, but what kind of information are we going to get prior to the meeting? Or do we just use the current adopted plan?
Similar to what the consultant did two years ago. She'll be in contact with each of you individually for a 30-minute to an hour-long conversation about the things you're interested in discussing. But it is intended to be fairly open-ended discussion and, you know, potential for new direction, confirmation of what's already been happening. Talking with the council about this several months ago now, the consensus that I got was that it would be better to have sort of a refresh of what we've already done. My goal would be to make this an every-other-year activity. And it would actually, although this one is an off-year, my intent would be to start having these essentially in the January following an election. I know that Councilmember Negretti has expressed some frustration that he wasn't involved in that, and now it's taken us almost a year to get to the point that we're ready to have another one. So to stem that issue after the next election, I would propose at that time that we have this one simply to do the refresh and include Mr. Negretti's thoughts as well as all of your own, seeing what we've done. But then set us up on a schedule to where each January of every odd number of year, so we would do it again in January of 2017, following that election. That way, if there are new council members, they can have the same input for, you know, that next two-year period.
We're going to use the same consultant?
At this point, yes. Because it's really more of a refresh of what we did, revisit, refresh.
I wouldn't think it's going to... I don't know. It just doesn't seem like it would take six hours again because we didn't... I don't know, a lot of that was kind of getting us... Maybe it will take six, I don't know.
It's tough to say. As open-ended as these things are, the last one we thought would take eight to 10 hours, and it ended up being only about six. So you may be, may be right. I'm just thinking of just budgeting time. Planning on...
There really wasn't any preparation involved. It was more kind of free-thinking.
Right.
About where we think we want to go.
If I can make a recommendation, it sounds like a lot of great work was done already. I think what we're talking about is more scoping as to actually providing a finished product or anything like that. So maybe perhaps the first meeting could be three hours and cover more of reaffirm priorities and assumptions from the past, identify any new issues, and then let the staff and the consultant work together to provide a tangible product that is brought back to the council. But yeah, I agree with Jim. Is the three hours being okay? Is it just a launching point for a scoping?
Yeah, we'll make it work. We don't, we won't have a full agenda. We won't have any agenda other than this item, essentially. So I don't know that we necessarily need to put a number on it. It's just a question of if you think it's only going to be three hours, perhaps later in the afternoon, as a start time would work, and then we can schedule a dinner and either come back after dinner or not, depending on how far we get.
I think 2:00 would be a good start time.
2:00 works with your schedule, and that's what we'll do.
It's good for me.
Okay.
Have some food.
You'll get good food.
We're not leaving and going out for dinner. We're just going to eat whatever is there and keep going.
No, no. If we, I think the law would read that if you left and went out for dinner, you'd have to take the public with you and provide them with dinner.
Brown bag. Okay, now we're moving on to public comments. I don't have any cards again. So City Manager, do you have anything to report to us?
A couple of upcoming events. I was, I thought I'd have a question on this, so I didn't chime in when I perhaps could have. Legislative Review Committee is now set with five members. I've assigned a staff member or two to assist that committee. So we'll be reaching out to all five of those committee members to set up an organizational meeting and brown act training as well and talk about their first assignment. So this coming Saturday is going to be a busy day for Victorville. The Kiwanis is putting on the Victorville Christmas Parade in the morning. And then, starting at 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., the tree lighting, which is a little bit bigger this year than last year. We'll have more vendor booths, a little bit more to do. And hopefully, we'll convince some of the parade floats to come over to park outside the tree lighting ceremony and make it a little bit more of a festival atmosphere, trying to grow those types of events in Victorville. But that starts at 4:00. Tree lighting is set for about 5:00. There is a full program as usual. And then Saturday, December 12th, is a run in the park at Hook Park, 3K, 5K options, and then bocce ball, free bocce ball starting at 10:00 a.m. And the rec pages and city guide will be coming out this month as well.
Thank you. Council members, anyone?
I just want to make the council aware, and as you are aware, Apple Valley was not successful along with us in securing the Tiger Grant to ultimately build the Green Tree Extension of the Ekaloma Green Tree Project. But I haven't given up on that. Neither has, neither has Apple Valley or Supervisor Robert Lovinggood. And we are working on potentially a loan agreement with Sandbag where they would, in essence, either loan us the money or one of the agencies the money to help complete that project. We're just in the beginning stages of that, just the beginning talks of that. But I did want to make the council aware that that is kind of going on in the background because if you hear anything about that, any such agreement would have to come back to this council anyway for approval. So I don't want you to think that it's moving forward without your approval. I did want to make you aware of it, though. There are talks going on amongst City, Victorville, the Town of Apple Valley, and the County of San Bernardino, along with Sandbag, to try to figure out a way to fund and complete that project. So as we have more information and that actually works itself out, it'll be brought back to the council for your consideration.
Excuse me, yeah, I have, in regard to the comments, that extension built currently, the adopted plan goes into Green Tree Boulevard. Not so overly congested, but there's a lot of traffic. But the interchange, the intersection at 7th and Green Tree, difficult at present and would become impossible. Past council somewhere in the past talked about merging that into Hisparia Road with an easy swing southerly so that it would use the new interchange primarily as access to this Ekaloma Crossing. But that isn't what has been adopted. And I'm wondering if the council is aware that that is the issue and whether or not that is the exit point, which is into Green Tree, and whether or not that needs to be looked at again, or if that is acceptable. Counsel for the future.
Mayor Protem Cox, actually, the council before you, perhaps two ago, I'm not real sure, actually brought that up. And the staff at that time made a commitment to study that final alignment before we reach a final approval. At that time, the council was making a decision on some of the environmental work that was being done and monies were available. The decision that they made was with the knowledge that should that road be redirected outside of the environmental work, which is a potential, that it could involve the repayment of about a million-dollar grant. But the monies were available at the time, so they agreed to move forward with that study. But the staff is studying it now, actually, as had been promised, to bring back to this council for one final review of, is that the best option? Or is there maybe a different option that may work better? So we've already got engineering staff working on bringing an item to the council before actual construction plans might be brought so that we can take one final look to see, is there maybe a better way to intersect with Hisparia Road to influence traffic to go to the new Mason and Esqali interchange?
You know, I think, I think the first time somebody goes straight on Green Tree and goes to that 7th Street and Palmdale Road intersection, they will never do it a second time. They will, I mean, traffic going south, if they're, if what they're trying to do is get to the freeway, they're going to go to Nisqali. That's just an open sale. If they're going north, they're going to go over to Seneca and Roy Rogers. I mean, nobody in their right mind would, on two separate occasions, drive through 7th Street and Palmdale Road.
You know, a wise, old Irish engineer that I once knew...
I am wise and old.
Please tell him I said that, by the way. Used to say that traffic flows like water. If it stops, it will flow to the side. So you are correct. The fear would be, or the risk would be, that if they do that, maybe they don't turn on Hisparia Road. Maybe they get close to 7th and say, oh, wait, it looks bad, so I'm going to make a quick left onto Arrowhead or something like that. And suddenly, we've got the sort of field of traffic moving around any potentials. So it is good engineering work to do to sort of finalize it. I think a change in the plans, I think, is doubtful because this has been looked at in the past, but not to the level of detail that we're going to do at this point in time.
One of those design features that I think would be a mistake is where they did not permit a lane going straight on Green Tree. I think that's just going to invite people to break the law by driving through parking lots and other stuff. So I think there need to be two lanes going on Hisparia, one going the other way on Hisparia and one going across. You know, I, I don't know. Smarter minds than me will figure it out.
Well, I, I just would like to see a discussion. The first time I followed two trucks from the industrial area up Green Tree and 7th, I said, once they go through here, they'll never do it again. Count the number of trucks that go through there every...
And you know what's hard to understand of the number of trucks that still go, leave Foxborough and go down Bear Valley Road instead of Nisqali? And they're going north. I mean, they're going north on the 15.
Saying about sane people not going to do that? Okay.
I don't have any data to back it up, but I think that was happening for some time because, you know, they're, if they're not from this area, their GPS device that they likely would be using doesn't know about that, didn't know about that interchange. Hopefully, they all do by now. But I would think that, you know, maybe they just didn't know about it, and maybe their whatever electronic device or their map didn't tell them about it. Yeah, don't know.
I don't know either. Mr. Attorney, voting for items, if you are on the wrong side of the vote, a losing vote, you can't ask for reconsideration.
That is correct. You have to be on the winning side to...
On the winning side, how long do you have before you can ask?
I don't believe there's any time limit on asking for reconsideration.
I am still bothered by the vote that we took on the liquor license for the hence that service stations, you can stop and buy alcoholic beverage, but go to the shopping center and buy groceries, but you can't buy beer or wine. I was kind of under the impression, my fault, my mistake, that we were acting in compliance with ABC rules, and I didn't want to... Two things. Councilmember McEckern wisely pointed out that this was studied by the Planning Commission, and it was unanimous vote. We take those recommendations extremely seriously. But I talked to one of the planning commissioners since then, and they thought they also were acting in accordance with the ABC rules. Now I'm kind of being told that's not an ABC rule, it's our rule. I'd like to have that. Our rule and not an ABC rule, I'd like to reconsideration on.
Which store specifically? Which approval? Peter, okay, we can look at that and agendize it.
I know, seriously, you know, the federal ruling, the planning commission, challenging them because I know the time they put it on. But if one member believes that they were acting in accordance with ABC, and I did, and that's not the case, then I make it deserved.
You're asking for the decision on the appeal to be placed back on this agenda at the next meeting?
If, if in fact, that ruling that the council adopted is based upon requirement and had to say...
Does the planning commission, they know?
It's not on the agenda right now, but I... It's not on the agenda right now, but I believe it is part of your zoning requirements. It's in your zoning development code. But we will research it, get it back, and to the extent it's different than, and it's not an ABC rule, we'll put it back on the agenda.
But they do know for a fact that it's not the ABC rule.
Once we make that determination.
Maybe it's semantics, but I think maybe a better term to use would be pursuant to a city code rather than the ABC code. Because the city codes are still in accordance with ABC rules. But they are city codes that were enforced and city decisions that were made, not based on the ABC code, but based on city ordinance.
Could be that on reconsideration, we might decide just to send it back to the planning commission to reconsider.
Okay. And it is going back to the, to be agendized? You're going to look into it? Thank you. Do we have anything else from anyone?
Sure, one last thing. Thank you for everyone's coming out tonight. I hope you all had a great Thanksgiving. I know I did, and when I feel truly blessed as I am, start to want to give back more to folks that are less fortunate. And I would hope that as we celebrate the holidays with our families and close ones, that if you feel like giving, I know I took my kids out to the High Desert Homeless Shelter, and I have been there a couple of times. And I've engaged those folks that work there, not to just drop off whatever I feel like they might need, but actually asking them, what do they need? Because I see a lot of clothes, that's all I know. They have plenty of clothes, from what I can tell. So I think we're good with clothes. But, you know, you might, and probably canned goods. But you know what? There are families living there. And, you know, it's breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And meat or protein is something that they don't get. So we're happy to do that. And I encourage one of my coworkers who, you know, we were talking about giving and panhandlers. And, you know, I, I really am starting to have a difficult time with the, with the number of panhandlers. And the constant panhandling that I'm seeing, just, I mean, it's, I mean, everywhere you go. And, and so giving to a panhandler, trust me, is not as rewarding, not near as rewarding, as going to the High Desert Homeless Shelter with some of the items that they sorely need. And we were, like I said, we had a great year, and I hope everyone is prepared for the holidays or getting prepared. And just keeps that in mind. There is, High Desert Homeless Shelter is doing a fantastic job.
Just to underscore that, Eric, my wife, not me, you know, we're blessed as well. And she did exactly that last year. I think, I don't remember if it was Christmas or Thanksgiving, but she asked, you know, what, we want to provide something, some kind of food to help out with the meal. What do you need? Because you don't need us to bring 10 more turkeys if you already have 200 turkeys. And the funny thing was, what they said was, you know, we have essentially the full meal except for Ready Whip for the top of the pie. And it just makes the meal. So we went to Costco, and we bought a case of Ready Whip and dropped it off. I would have never once thought to provide Ready Whip, but that just made their meal. It's her, not me. I don't want to take credit for that.
One else? This meeting is adjourned. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.